Okay. Hello, everyone. Good evening, councillors, officers and community members in attendance tonight. Members of the public live streaming tonight's meeting. We're about to... Oh, have we opened? No, we're opening. Okay, thank you. And members of the public who are live streaming tonight's meeting. We've got a few people still walking into the gallery at the moment, so hello to all. My name's councillor Christine O'Laurs. I'm the mayor of Darabben City Council and the chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you all here and I declare the meeting open at 6:05pm. The meeting is being livestreamed and recording will be made available on the council website as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, I would just like to start by acknowledging that we're meeting tonight on the lands of the Orangie Warriorong people, who are, of course, the traditional owners and custodians of the land on which Darabben stands. So I want to recognise their continuing connection to land, waters and culture, and pay my respects to elders past and present. Okay, so I'd like to welcome and acknowledge all councillors. We've got our executive leadership team here as well and a range of officers who are joining us and will help us this evening. We have an apology from councillor Ruth Jelley, who is on leave at the moment. So that does mean we have an even number of councillors. So that may require me as the chair to have a casting vote. And so I'm just going to stay right up front so that everyone knows that if that occurs, my vote will be the same vote as my deliberative vote. So it won't be changed. Disclosure of conflicts of interest is the next item on the agenda. Does anyone have a conflict of interest that they need to disclose in relation to the agenda? Councillor Bogus, if you could just tell us the nature of the disclosure and for which item.
It's for the notice of motion in relation to the e-scooters and it's a personal conflict of interest.
Thank you. So if you just make sure you remind us as we get to that agenda item and the same for other councillors. There was no other conflicts, was there? Do I see? Miss any? No. So the same for other councillors. If through the meeting you happen to realise that you do have a conflict, please do let us know and raise it immediately, but also at the time of the item that's being discussed. Councillors, could I please have a mover for the adoption of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 22nd of September 2025? Councillor Vassilya Selkos, thank you. Do I have a seconder? So councillor Sangster, thank you. I'm just going to put this straight to the vote. All those in favour, raise your hand. And that one's carried unanimously, so thank you all. Just need to talk about OHNS for a few minutes and councillors' responsibilities in relation to occupational health and safety. So everyone attending tonight's meeting has obviously a right, either in person or online, to feel safe both physically and emotionally. So wonderful to see a number of people in the gallery tonight, but I'd like to remind everyone in attendance to be respectful of one another. And as outlined in our governance rules, can you please note the following? So members of the gallery must remain silent at all times during a meeting, other than if you've been invited to stand up and address the meeting. Councillors and members of the gallery addressing the meeting must do so in a courteous and respectful manner and take direction from the chairperson whenever called upon to do so. Anyone attending the meeting must not utter anything offensive, indecent, insulting or objectionable, including words that would be considered racist, sexist or homophobic. And if anyone engages in conduct that is improper or disorderly, the chairperson may direct that person to cease their conduct and that person must comply with that direction. Okay, now we get on to the interesting stuff. So we have public question time. I know we've got a number of questions tonight. We're looking forward to hearing those. Just, we have 30 minutes allowed for public question time. If we look like we're going to exceed that time, I will ask councillors for someone to put forward a procedural motion to extend question time for another 30 minutes. In line with council's governance rules, no questions can be taken from people in the gallery unless they've been submitted by 12pm today. And you can only ask three questions. You can't speak for more than two minutes. And please keep in mind that it is about questions. So if you put a whole lot of backstory to your question, you're going to miss out on your question. So please try and just stick to the question. Questions relating to notices of motions, petitions or urgent business will not be accepted in accordance with the governance rules. So we have both a couple of notices of motions and a petition this evening, so those rules can apply in those cases. Okay, and for members of the public who have registered to ask a question in person, I'll call out your name when you hear that. If you come up to the lectern, make sure the microphone's turned on, there's just a little button. And for those intending virtually, I'll invite you to unmute yourself and state your name and ask your question. The relevant general manager will generally provide the response to the questions. And like questions can be grouped together. So the first person who submitted the question can ask their question, but if this question's been repeated, we won't ask it a second time. That's it. So thank you to the people who have registered their intent to ask a question this evening. We have got... Oh, that's on to submissions. I missed the questions. I went straight to the questions. Okay, so the first question is... Now, excuse me if I say this incorrectly. Norm Kzam, I think? Norm, speaking about vandalism? I would say Norm's not here, so Georgie's going to ask the questions for us tonight for people who aren't here, so thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. After repeated long-term vandalism to our business premises, the issue of vandalism is an obvious widespread issue along High Street. The repairs not only come at a cost to the business, but the perception of the patrons will undoubtedly have an impact on the business performance. What is or can be done to ensure the coolest strip in the world does not regress at the rate that it is from an aesthetic perspective, which will have a flow-on effect to the overall performance and drawing power?
Thank you. And Rachel, can you give the response?
Thanks, Mayor. So our department manager's spoken to Norm and understands the vandalism he's concerned about is graffiti. And that's a challenge for lots of property owners, including council. Norm shared his challenges with being repeatedly hit with graffiti even after removing it. And our manager ran through what council's doing to try to reduce the graffiti challenges, including taking it off our own assets like benches and bins, reaching out to other asset owners like utility companies and looking at our options under the local law.
Thank you. The second question is from Mayan Lynn. Mayan is also not attending today, so thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. To the chairperson, I am the operator of a business called Royal Garden Body Care at Johnson Street Reservoir, directly opposite Keon Park Railway Station. Here are my questions for the council to consider. The new station opposite does not have any public toilets for commuters and others to use, which I find very strange. My other shops have been approached by people wanting to use our toilets. Will the council build toilet facilities in the vicinity for public use?
That's Vanessa.
Thank you for your question, Mayan. And through you, Mayor, the station development was delivered by the state government rather than council. And while council played a role in advocating for particular design aspects, it did not deliver the project. There is no current proposal to install public toilets at Keon Park Station.
And the next two questions. So question number two, through you, Mayor. With the new station, vehicle traffic has increased up and down Johnson Street. Can the council place speed humps to control the speed of vehicles? And question three, shop operators and their staff are finding it is difficult to find parking all day. Can the council provide something similar to a permit system for shop owners?
Thank you for your next questions. At the time, apologies. Johnson Street is located in Group C of council's Your Street, Your Say programme, and it's planned to bring a report to council that considers the second stage of the community engagement next month. And at the time that the station project was developed, council advocated to the state government for a range of traffic measures, but unfortunately, this was not successful. And regarding your third question, council's current parking policy does not include provisions for trader permit parking. Council is open to reviewing the parking arrangements around local shops to help improve turnover and better support access for customers. A senior transport officer will call you tomorrow to discuss this process.
Thank you. The next three questions are from Walter France, who has asked that we read these out. So there's two about art competitions and one about changing the name of Batman Park.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Will council seriously consider restricting entries in any and all art competitions and prizes to Darabben residents only? Question two, will council seriously consider reinstating the Darabben Indigenous Aboriginal-only Arts Prize? And the third question, will council seriously consider application to the office of geographic names of illegally compliant and acceptable name change to the still legal Batman Park inappropriated and unacceptably named according to the OGNGMBRI and for that purpose propose Jesse Hunter?
Okay, so yeah, we'll get Nina for the first two, the art-related ones.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Thank you, Walter, for the questions. I note that we are meeting with you soon to discuss a number of your queries that you've put forward. In relation to the first question, Darabben council runs a biennial art prize for Darabben-only residents. This is known as the A1 Darabben Art Salon. This is an inclusive art award that provides an opportunity for all members of our community to have their work exhibited at Darabben's Public Art Gallery, Bundora Homestead Art Centre, at no cost. In line with most other local councils across Victoria, including Nulumbik, Wyndham, Banial, Moonee Valley and a number of others. Darabben council also runs a national art award known as the Darabben Art Prize, dedicated to excellence in contemporary art. We believe the balance of both local and national art awards is invaluable and ensures Darabben remains a vibrant, creative city and a leader in the arts. In relation to question two, through yourself, Mayor. Darabben council has previously run an Aboriginal art prize known as the Gumbury White Dove Award. This prize was delivered in partnership with RMIT's Indigenous Art Course up until 2012. Unfortunately, when RMIT closed its Indigenous Art Course, which ran from 1999 to 2012, council had to discontinue the partnership and the award. Council's biennial local art prize, the A1 Darabben Art Salon, is an inclusive art award open to all members of our community. A great deal of direct outreach to local Aboriginal-run organisations is undertaken in the lead-up to this prize to encourage participation from Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander community members.
And thank you. I think Rachel, Vanessa? Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Walter, for the question. Thank you very much for raising this with us. Council has been aiming to move away from the name Batman Park and there isn't work specifically underway at the moment, but we do appreciate and understand the priority.
Okay, the next question is from Mark Delatorre, who is not able to be here this evening. So Georgie, could you read that out?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. As residents of Glenvale Road, we've raised concerns about illegal rat-running via the partial closure for over 15 years. At my urging, council's traffic counts show 200 cars a day illegally entering Glenvale Road to avoid major roads. Council then consulted on a full closure, but after feedback mainly from rat-runners, has instead resolved to reopen the closed entry on a trial basis without improving curbing or sightlines. If 200 cars use it illegally now, how many will when it's legal? What safeguards and monitoring will council implement during this trial?
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you for the question, Mark. The partial closure of Glenvale Road was introduced to reduce non-local traffic heading to Gilbert Road. Since then, land uses have changed and travel patterns have shifted. A recent consultation showed 70% of respondents did not support a full closure. Officers also noted that a full closure could unintentionally redirect traffic and increase unsafe driving near the no-entry zone by Reservoir West Primary School. During the upcoming trial period, officers will continue to monitor traffic to better understand how travel patterns and driver behaviour evolve. Once the trial concludes, we'll share the findings with residents.
Okay, do we have James Pato here? Thanks, James. Please come up and ask your question.
Or do I? Because I've got three questions.
Yeah, if you read the three out and then...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So given the significant weight the government will place on council's response to the Thornbury Activity Centre plans, how does council justify undertaking no community engagement, ignoring submissions like that from Fair Growth Thornbury representing over 950 residents, and rushing its response through on a limited timeline that gave the public almost no chance to comment? Further, how does council justify supporting inner catchment classifications for areas it identified only two months ago in its own housing strategy as increased change zones of up to three storeys high, now permitting six? When there's been no change in circumstances, no engagement, and when outer catchment would significantly better align with the council's own strategy? And finally, how has council reflected the clear community priorities from Phase One, the CRG, and Fair Growth Thornbury's petitions of nearly 1,000 residents, calling to protect Thornbury's residential streets and to preserve High Street's low-rise, village-like character and historic, not just heritage shop fronts?
Thank you very much. Vanessa is going to answer these ones.
Thank you, James, for your questions this evening. Regarding your first question, the Thornbury Activity Centre plans is the state government's project. Like the community, council had a short time to prepare a submission when the information was released, and we must lodge that it's our submission by tomorrow. Council drew on its existing strategic work to inform the submission, including the recently adopted housing strategy, and that was informed by two phases of community engagement. Community engagement for the Thornbury Activity Centre has been carried out by the state government, and council officers attended and observed these sessions. Regarding your second question, council's housing strategy identifies areas suitable for increased and substantial change. The state government's Activity Centre programme has broader planning goals involving significant growth in these areas. The draft submission that will be tabled tonight adopts a balanced approach to these two frameworks, while asking for the state's plans to align more closely with council's housing strategy for a more nuanced approach. And regarding your final question, the draft submission requests that new built-form controls protect heritage buildings with sensitive transitions to low-rise and heritage precincts through setbacks and stepped massing, while minimising overshadowing of neighbouring properties. It also requests the removal of existing neighbourhood residential zones and heritage precincts from the catchment areas.
Thank you. Marie Gerrey is not here tonight, but if we could please ask her questions?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Marie has two questions. The first question is, is very clear in any of the housing consultations, state level or council, completed in regards to Thornbury, that residents want to retain the heritage and village feel of their community. So why have you not considered the impact of your housing strategy and its blanket catchments on heritage houses built in the 1910s that are still intact and in a row along Harold and Smith Street between St George's Road and the rail line? And the second question, what road infrastructure will be provided in already congested, narrow, quiet residential streets in Smith Street and Harold Street between St George's Road and the railway line with the addition of six-storey apartment blocks?
And Vanessa?
Thank you, Marie, for your two questions this evening. The Darabben housing strategy seeks to direct housing growth to the most sustainable locations with good access to services, facilities and transport, while also reflecting constraints to growth such as special characteristics protected under the heritage overlay. Council's draft submission to the state Activity Centre programme asks that the state's plans align more closely with council's housing strategy for a more nuanced approach. And for your second question, the draft submission is seeking better east-west walking and cycling links between St George's Road and High Street, supported by traffic calming measures. It is also asking for state-funded upgrades to tram and bus routes, including the Route 86, to improve reliability, accessibility and pedestrian safety. We expect that further information around infrastructure planning will be announced by the state government at a later date.
Thank you. Carmel Davies? Thank you.
Thanks. In 2024, High Street was awarded the coolest street in the world due to its vibrant, diverse atmosphere, its strong community feel, its independent local businesses. A notable exception to this is Dundas Street High Street Corner, where the shoddy high-rises have left a really gloomy wind tunnel. Is the council truly considering destroying High Street's livability by generally approving the state government's plans for high and mid-rise buildings along a broad section of High Street? Second question, council prides itself that in Darabben, we're committed to putting the community first. Well, why then was this submission so rushed? And can you delay your submission until you engage in a proper, community-informed review of these state government plans? The Community Reference Group statement and the Fair Growth Thornbury petition of over 1,000 residents have called for a strict six-storey cap along High Street, a classification of all residential streets in the Activity Centre as an outer catchment rather than inner catchment, and a commitment to diverse housing types suited to the diverse community in Darabben rather than a one-size-fits-all that the government's imposed across Melbourne. Why has council failed to highlight these community priorities in its submission? Thank you.
Vanessa?
Thank you, Carmel, for your questions. The draft submission celebrates the unique culture of High Street-Thornbury and requests that the state government's plan protect and enhance it. The draft submission supports mid-rise growth of six to eight storeys with respect to heritage significance, with fine-grained commercial shop fronts to support small businesses and creative industries. Taller buildings on larger master-planned sites are only supported on very large sites and were tied to a public benefits framework. For your second question, I'd refer also to the response provided to James earlier. This is a project run by the state and council had a short time to prepare a submission and we must lodge the submission tomorrow. and we must lodge the submission tomorrow. Regarding your third question, the draft submission table tonight recommends six-to-eight-storey height limits for High Street's core areas. Taller buildings on larger master-planned sites are only supported, as I mentioned before, where the sites are large and where they are tied to a public benefits framework. The draft submission asks for housing growth to meet diverse household needs, including affordable and accessible homes, and better aligning to the catchment areas with council's housing strategy.
Okay, thank you. We have questions now from Adam Jeffrey. Thank you, Georgie.
Thank you, three mayor. Adam has one question in relation to the Thornbury Activity Centre Assessment of Changes relating to council land. Has council considered having number two A Rayleigh Street and number one Clarendon Street as public-use zone, and then rezoning the other properties to commercial to ensure the kindergarten and park is protected long-term and aligning with current community uses? Has council considered the impact on families if services were relocated or disrupted?
Thank you, Rachel.
Thanks, mayor. Thanks for the question, Adam. Council will make a decision about its submission to the state government tonight. By way of clarity, I can confirm that the state government's proposed rezoning would allow the site to continue to be used as a kinder, and council's only plans at that site are for it to stay as it is, so as a kinder and with some parkland there. Irrespective of the rezoning, the building was built in 1979, and it has about 20 to 30 years of life. At the end of that lifetime, council would need to consider how to redevelop the building. There would be disruption at that point in time, and we'd always work with the service to work out how to manage that time of a building's life. What we know about the zoning itself is that the commercial zone allows multiple choices for how to continue to deliver kindergarten and park services, including incorporating them into development on the site itself or expanding or improving another nearby site. A public-use zone would also enable kindergarten use to be considered. It's a more restrictive zone. There would be fewer options open to council at that point in time. And for that reason, it's been assessed as as having less community benefit.
Thank you. Do we have Kay Chung Kwok? Thank you. So Chung, I understand you've submitted three questions, but questions two and three are disallowed because they relate to a notice of motion, so item 11.2. But go ahead with your first question. Thank you.
With over 330 participants, over 240 juniors and over 80 female players loses access to JSE Donath East Pavilion and grounds for six months of each year to one cricket team, and how this aligns with obligations under the Gender Equality Act of 2020, Local Government Act of 2020, and the state Victorian Government Fair Access Policy roadmap?
Thank you for your question. Deana?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Chung, for your question. Each year, council allocates sports grounds and pavilions from the 1st of April to the 30th of September for winter sports, and from 1 October to the 31st of March for summer sports. This approach is based on Sports and Recreation Victoria's advice and guidance, and Football Victoria's guidelines also acknowledge that when space is limited, sharing pitches between sporting codes is supported. Accordingly, Donath Reserve East Pavilion and Oval Six, Seven and Eight are allocated to Keon Park Soccer Club during the winter season, together with additional days across summer season for trials, selection and pre-season activities. In summer, Donath Oval Six is used by Donath Cricket Club, the North Metropolitan Cricket Association, and the Nepalese Cricket Association, so three clubs. Council is strongly committed to gender inclusion. In council's sporting fees, charges and occupancy agreement policy, our commitment is embedded and includes an action plan to encourage gender-inclusive practices by all Darabin sports clubs. Council has developed a gender impact self-assessment toolkit to assist and is working with all of the sports clubs to implement relevant actions.
Thank you, Deana. We have next Derby Fullerton? Derby here? Thank you, Derby. Come up to the lectern and press the button, yep.
Thank you, mayor. Is council willing to submit an application for a Henderson Park upgrade through the Pick My Park Programme? Second, will council resurface and improve the heavily-used area of Henderson Park to adequately perform its role in the growing community? And third, will council engage with the community and Thornbury Primary School regarding how the park is used and areas for improvement? Thank you.
Rachel? Thank you. Thank you for your question.
Thanks, mayor. Thanks, Derby. Really, thanks for the suggestions. The state government has shared with us community feedback they've gathered from people across Darabin with ideas for the Picker Park Grants Programme, and officers are reviewing those at the moment. We haven't yet developed recommendations for council's application. We're doing that. We do know that there are a lot more ideas than we'll be in a position to recommend to go in and application. The next steps for council officers to put a proposed application to councillors to consider at a meeting, and after that, the state government will consider all applications.
Thank you. Serena O'Malley? Oh, hang on a moment. I might just, sorry, can I just ask for a procedural motion to extend? Thank you, councillor Turri. Second, councillor Julia O'Brien. Can we all, all in favour, raise your hand? Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Serena. Yep, sorry.
Given the efficiencies and consistency that multi-employer bargaining provides to employers, why is Darabin council opposing a multi-employer agreement with seven other councils that's supported by the majority of its workforce? Secondly, how much money has Darabin council spent on legal costs in opposing the ASU's claim for multi-employer bargaining?
Carolyn?
Thank you. Thank you, Serena, for your question. So to your question number one, Darabin is one of 10 councils subject to an application before the Fair Work Commission to be included in a proposed multi-employer enterprise agreement. Darabin is fully participating in this process, and the direction that we take is informed by our people. Seven councils have consented to the multi-employer bargaining process after conducting ballots, each resulting in a majority of employees supporting that approach. Darabin held a ballot in April but did not reach the same outcome, which is why we have been awaiting instructions from the Fair Work Commission. Due to delays in this process, we have decided to run another ballot as soon as possible to gain clarity and ensure our next steps reflect the preferences of our employees. To your second question, as previously outlined, Darabin is one of 10 councils responding to an application before the Fair Work Commission. Darabin is fully engaged in the process and does not oppose the application.
Thank you.
Sorry, just a follow-up. I did see something in the Fair Work Commission where Darabin was stating that it didn't share a single interest. So that, to me, implies that it's opposing.
I think we might have to take that on notice and come back to you, Serena. I'm not sure. Don't know the answer to that. Thank you. I do think we need to step back. I don't believe we answered question three of Derby Fullerton's. Did you answer that one?
I don't think I did answer it, actually.
Apologies, Derby, yeah.
Derby asked about, will council engage with the community and the Thornbury Primary School about how the park's used and areas for improvement? And certainly, we wouldn't be able to do that in time to make a submission to the state government for the funding programme we were talking about. We would generally aim to consult with a school that's a neighbour to a project like that ahead of works.
Georgie, here's one for you. This is from Tallulah Jane, relate to the Palestinian flag.
Thank you, three mayor. Tallulah has three questions. The first question is, over the past two years, many in our community have raised concerns about the divisive impact of flying the Palestinian flag at Darabin council buildings. Given that a ceasefire is now in place, why does Darabin council continue to fly the Palestinian flag? And the second question is, it is now eight months since Darabin council publicly stated that its flag policy is under review. When will the council make a decision on this matter and what is causing the delay? Question three, what action is Darabin council taking to address the growing number of vacant shop fronts covered with political and ideological messaging on High Street, many which are divisive and make members of the community feel unwelcome?
Vanessa, thank you.
Thank you for your questions, Tallulah. Council resolved to fly the Palestinian flag at its 18th of December 2023 council meeting. A decision of council is required to change this resolution. For your second question, council has been working on the development of the flag policy. The policy will be presented to council, but this will not happen before November.
So graffiti, it's a difficult challenge and takes a lot of different parties to really address it fully. Generally, council doesn't remove graffiti on private property, but we do assist where that graffiti is offensive because of the impact it can have on our community. So we encourage residents to report offensive graffiti to council. In other cases, we can provide a free graffiti removal kit to property owners to assist. If necessary, council does have some enforcement options. We can require property owners to address problems with property being unsightly.
Okay, David Taylor? David has a couple of questions relating to the Darwin Creek Management Committee and the Mary Creek Management Committee. Thank you, David. Phone on?
Thank you, mayor. First question. Recently, Banjore council moved to maintain arrangements with DCMC, bringing to an end a desire to outsource. During the debate, a key criticism of DCMC centered around its arms-length relationship to council. As an incorporated association, it was improperly deemed to be beyond the control of Darabin or any other member council. In light of this, what steps will Darabin now take to ensure this criticism is addressed via the only available mechanism, the DCMC rules? Two, the DCMC kerfuffle also had implications for MCMC. It is noted that all of MCMC's office-bearing positions are occupied by representatives of one organisation, the Friends. This suggests that councils are not exercising their responsibilities to sufficiently own the organisation via occupying office-bearing roles. Is it not inconsistent to argue that these incorporated associations are beyond the control of councils when councils do not seek to become office-bearers to ensure shared member control and sound conduct?
Rachel? Thank you. Thanks, David.
So certainly, council values its partnership with and membership of DCMC and the work that it does as a not-for-profit organisation. We don't have concerns about DCMC's status as an incorporated association affecting our ability to do work in partnership with DCMC. Changing the rules of DCMC is generally a matter for DCMC and its board. Council is a member, and it does have power as a member to propose amendments at the AGM that would then be voted on by members. But at this stage, we don't have plans for a particular, to put a particular change to DCM's rules to an AGM. Similarly, we value the work of MCMC and a confident in its work for council and the community. And MCMC's governance is generally a matter for MCMC board members. Council has nominated a councillor to sit on the MCMC board.
Okay, do we have Matthew Sammott? No, I don't think Matthew's here. Georgie, could you read out Matthew's question, please?
Yep, so Matthew has submitted a question in relation to e-scooters. Given the VCAT finding of 11 September against Yarra City Council, confirming that council does owe a duty to provide clear access on roads and pathways, does Darabin council wish to change any aspect of any previous public comments or responses to public questions relating to Darabin council's proposed shared e-scooter trial?
Okay, Vanessa?
Thank you, Matthew, for your question. Maintaining clear footpaths for pedestrians and all people, and also in particular for people with limited mobility, has been and will continue to be a priority and considered carefully throughout the trial. Darabin is proposing a fully restricted e-scooter parking model that designates areas where e-scooters can park and thereby addressing the issues that have been experienced in other municipalities. And Darabin is aware of the VCAT determination.
Thank you, three mayor. Matthew has one more question. Does Darabin council accept the findings from a city of Melbourne survey of people using shared e-scooters, which found that only 3% of e-scooter trips replaced private car trips?
Thank you again for the question, Matthew. We are aware that previous trials in Melbourne have resulted in e-scooters replacing previous walking, public transport and car trips. We note the survey and uptake in other municipalities and considering their context and other transport options and their population. We have undertaken research specific to Darabin to inform this trial and anticipate a high uptake. The trial will improve transport choices for the community, especially for those who do not have a car or can easily access public transport.
Okay, thank you very much. So next, on the order of business, we've got submissions. So our governance rules permits members of the public to register to interest an ordinary council meeting in relation to reports listed on the agenda. We've got five submissions this evening, so obviously a lot of interest. And they're on three different topics. So normally, we would do these before the topic is discussed, but I think it probably makes sense to just get them all done now so that if you want to hang around for later in the meeting, you can. And if not, you can head home and watch it on the big screen. So we will start. So thank you very much for everyone who made their submissions. It's really great for us as councillors. Great opportunity for us to hear what the committee has to say, as well as your questions, of course. So when I call your name, can you please come to the lectern to make your verbal submission? You've got two minutes to address the council. So first up, we're going to three that relate to item 9.2, which is Thornbury Activity Centre. Okay, so I'm going to call on James Pato first up. Thank you, James. Two minutes.
Thank you, mayor. I'm here to speak on behalf of Fair Growth Thornbury, a community group that advocates for the views of nearly 1,000 individuals through two public petitions that call for the protection of Thornbury's residential streets and the retention of High Street's village-like, low-rise and historic shop fronts. These asks reflect both Phase One and CRG. These asks reflect both Phase One and CRG community feedback. Council's draft submission ignores this feedback and the detailed submissions provided by Fair Growth Thornbury. The compressed timelines further deprives community of input, as does councillor Jellies' absence during this critical period. The weight of council's submission cannot be overstated. Through the Activity Centre Programme, the government has repeatedly ignored community feedback and relied heavily on council submissions. In reality, it will treat this as the authoritative statement of community views. On substance, the draft contradicts council's own housing strategy. Every increased change area is outer catchment, except the areas east of High Street, which are inner catchment, doubling heights from three to six stories compared to the housing strategy. It's an unjustifiable departure from council strategy and inconsistent with its stated advocacy principles. It also classifies intact residential streets west of High Street as inner catchment, disregarding their cohesive neighbourhood character and applying inconsistent standards compared to areas around Crockston. Further, the draft fails to adequately protect High Street's village-like, low-rise streetscape and historic shop fronts by supporting eight-to-12-storey heights and lot consolidation. Accordingly, we call on council to classify all increased change areas east of High Street in the housing strategy as outer catchment, apply outer catchment to residential streets between St George's and High Street as contained in Fair Growth Thornbury's submission shared with council, include a six-story height cap on High Street with no exceptions, and if minimal changes are made, amend the submission to clearly state that community engagement was not undertaken by council and that the response is not representative of community views. Finally, we urge councillors to reconsider the missed opportunity on St George's Road, which has the transport, frontage and capacity to deliver genuine, sustainable urban renewal.
Thank you very much, James. Just to comment, councillor Jellies is on leave at the moment, but she did participate in two of the briefing sessions and contributed through those processes. But thank you very much for your submission. Now I'm going to call on Alex Stoll.
Hi. So many residents have already spoken, and James, thank you for your very persuasive and thorough submission. And I would concur with everything in there, adding that I do think also between St George's Road and High Street on the west is also into that to be considered. I agree, council, your rules, I think we're all on the same page, actually, if we can look at it. And I guess we don't really understand the pressures that you're under, and we're sorry for that. And whatever you can do between now and tomorrow, go for it. And any support that you need, reach out to us. I want to say this, I work with organisations all around the world and I'm involved in measuring, helping measure organisations in large-scale change. And why I do that is because there's many well-intentioned policies that end up having the opposite effect. And police set arrest targets to fight crime, but they end up arresting more people for the wrong reasons. Hospitals set surgical targets to help more patients, but quality fails because speed gets under pressure. In the current, same way in this current planning approach, even though it's designed to manage growth, it is going to create really perverse incentives for development across our beautiful suburbs. We all know that, and council contends with it all the time. Only large developers or developers who are looking to really secure high returns will be able to do the sorts of developments. And we look at what is opposite Preston Woolworths and we are horrified. And we know council has its, or the planning is relying on council's capacity to deal with these perverse incentives, but we all know it's very difficult to do that. So what we can do now is just of the utmost importance, whatever you can do between now and tomorrow, to help to recognise that all of us together, if we can put in whatever it is and taking into account, I guess, the experiential knowledge and collective wisdom that everyone's sharing today, we appreciate everything you can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. And now call on Melanie Delmonaco. Thanks, Melanie.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. I'm a resident of Smith Street Thornbury. Like many here tonight, I agree, we need more homes. But we also, oh, sorry, my phone's just gone off, sorry, one sec. But we also need smart, sensitive planning, so higher density improves our neighbourhood, not undermines it. The state government's Activity Centre Programme feels highly rushed and poorly thought through. Across Melbourne, councils are standing up to demand better outcomes for their community. Thornbury deserves the same. While I thank council officers for the work on tonight's submission, it doesn't go far enough. The key gap is the lack of real nuanced street-by-street analysis within the so-called inner catchment. Our own local state MP, Cat Theophanous, recently addressed parliament outlining Thornbury residents want genuine street-by-street analysis and planning that recognises our micro-neighbourhoods, and she's right. Right now, the draft plan treats Thornbury's inner catchment as one enormous undifferentiated zone, allowing six-story buildings across central Thornbury without recognising the very different character, capacity and constraints from street to street. That's not good planning. What's more, Thornbury's inner catchment appears larger than in other comparable activity centres. Nidjri and North Essendon, in fact, have no inner catchment. Yet Thornbury's covers a vast area of quiet, narrow residential streets, many without the infrastructure or street capacity to handle such development. Take the area between St George's Road and the railway line north of Normanby Avenue, narrow character-filled streets already straddling with parking traffic and highly constrained access due to the railway line. Six stories here simply isn't sustainable. Outer catchment zoning allowing up to four stories is far more appropriate. With major growth already planned along High Street and St George's Road, extending six-story zones deep into quiet residential side streets risks eroding the livability and character of our neighbourhood. Please strengthen council submission, advocate clearly that six-story zoning should not apply to our quiet residential streets. Yep, and push for detailed, nuanced, street-by-street planning to help protect livability and character of Thornbury. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the next one is Kechong Kwak, and it relates to the sports grants item, which is item 9.5. Thank you.
To the chair, hi, my name is Chong, I'm back again, I'm from Roswell. I wish to make a submission on item 9.5. In 2022, the state government committed $600,000 towards female-friendly facilities at JC Donovan East for Keon Park Soccer Club. At the time, the club only had one senior women's and one junior girls' team representing female participation at the club. Since then, participation has more than doubled, it's closer to tripled for female. We now have over 330 players across 21 teams, including four girls' teams and two senior women's teams, making Keon Park one of Darabben's largest, most gender balanced and also culturally and language diverse clubs in the area. We ask that the council apply for the maximum allowable in the local sports infrastructure fund based off the growth of the club, which does not overlap with the $600,000 that was given to us for female-friendly facilities at Keon Park. We expect our growth to keep growing based off the fact that we are also the most affordable, so we always expect more teams to come to us, especially since we've been the most successful club in the area in the past season. So we had, one of our junior teams has crowned state champions in their division. And both our men's and women's are within the community clubs in Darabben. We are the top-ranking team in the area. So I think that will bring us a lot of visibility, and every year we struggle with junior coaches. So with that in mind, with what the $600,000 that was already given, $1.2 million that council has allocated for delivery and funds that can be redirected in planning and design allocation to delivery, there's already a clear pathway if we get additional $500,000 to build a 500-metre-square modular pavilion for about $1.65 million, which is what we got in writing.
Chong, we're going to need to ask you to wind up.
Order? Yes. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on the good year. Okay. And we have Serena Romelli. Serena has got a submission that relates to the governance report, item 9.8. Thank you.
Thank you. The community complaints about a councillor policy finally provided a fair and independent way for the community to raise code of conduct complaints, something long overdue after years of poor councillor behaviour in the chamber and online, obviously the previous council. Since the policy's inception in August 2023, there have been 15 community complaints about councillors, 12 of which were referred to the councillor conduct framework. The policy is robust precisely because it allows a prima facie case of misconduct to be automatically referred by the mayor for internal arbitration, removing politics from the process while ensuring frivolous complaints are prevented from proceeding. Other local governments, such as Greater Bendigo City Council, continue to maintain similar policies. If there is a legal inconsistency between the policy and the Local Government Act, as alleged in the governance report, the appropriate response is to amend the policy, not abolish it. However, I do not agree that such an inconsistency exists in relation to automatic referrals for internal arbitration. That's because last term, the elected councillors and mayor delegated part of their authority around complaints to this policy via a resolution of council. The current council could do the same. Removing the policy without genuine and effective replacement will disempower the community and undermine confidence in council's accountability mechanisms. Furthermore, the motion misleadingly states that the process is now embedded in the complaints handling policy, that's the general one. What is written in that policy is not the same thing. That policy clearly states that breaches of the code are managed in a separate process between councillors only via the councillor internal dispute resolution procedure. The upshot is that members of the community will need to lobby individual councillors to raise code of conduct complaints. An approach that has historically failed risks politicising complaints and exposes councillors to potential reprisals. I request that paragraph nine be deleted from the governance motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Serena, and that's the last of our submissions. So thank you to everyone. We do have a petition, so before we go, call for the petition to be tabled. It might just be useful to explain what the process of accepting a petition means. So it's not the council's role to vote in support or in opposition of the content of the petition. Tonight, we simply are performing a procedural function of accepting the petition and referring it to the CEO. So I remind councillors that in tabling a petition, you must confine yourself to the statement of the person whom it comes from, the number of signatories to it, material matters expressed in it and the text of the petition. So councillor O'Brien, I believe you're going to present this petition?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So yes, I seek to table a petition entitled against McDonald's 323 High Street, Northcote, to be referred to the CEO for consideration and response. The petition has been signed by over 500 people and complies with the council's governance rules. And the petition reads as follows. We, the undersigned, do not want to see the development of a 24-hour McDonald's fast-food restaurant on High Street, Northcote. And in tabling this petition, I would like to thank the people active in the community on this matter. We have Andy and Vanessa here tonight that I can see. And yeah, thank you for the work that you have done to bring this to us. And I know you're going to be talking to this, and we look forward to hearing it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Brien. Do I have a second to the tabling of the petition as moved by councillor O'Brien? Councillor Sangster, thank you. I now call on Andy Miller as the submitter of the petition to make a two-minute present submission. Thank you, Andy.
Mayor and councillors, I present this petition objecting to the development of a 24-hour McDonald's at 323 High Street, Northcote. 468 signatures were gathered over two days in October, with additional signatures collected after council's deadline, bringing our total to 520 objections. We are also aware of similar petitions at large, including over 11,000 signatures online. The petition is signed by local residents, business owners and visitors to High Street. Over 90% of people we met strongly object to this proposed development, citing negative impacts on our community and the visitor economy. A 24-hour, seven-day-a-week homogenous eatery will adversely affect the cultural balance of the street, the coolest street in the world, according to Time Out. McDonald's will not enhance or complement the generous mix of cultural cuisine currently available and will draw customers away from existing small business trying to stay afloat. Round-the-clock trading will bring noise and a high volume of traffic, including countless delivery vehicles impacting the amenity of the street, putting pressure on the already busy adjacent car park. All-night trading attracts boisterous activity, disturbing nearby residences and threatening personal safety, particularly for women and vulnerable people. McDonald's product is proven to contribute to obesity and other health-related issues. There are six schools nearby, including a primary school 50 metres away. We want to protect our kids and encourage healthy eating habits. The environmental impact of McDonald's is well-known to the council, generating vast quantities of non-biodegradable waste and contributing to greenhouse gas emissions through its operations and supply chain. We question the demand for this outlet. There are already three McDonald's stores eight minutes from the site, surely enough to satisfy any late-night craving. 323 High Street provides an opportunity to improve our much-loved precinct in keeping with its well-earned reputation. McDonald's is not the opportunity we or our future generations need, want or deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm going to put the motion to table the petition to the vote. So all those in favour, please raise your hands. That's carried unanimously. Thank you very much for your time. Okay, we're about to get into the consideration of reports. Councillors, I will be permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of debate on each item. When I think sufficient questioning has occurred, I'll exercise my right under the governance rules to limit questions, and I'll ask the debate to commence. Before we continue, can I also please ensure that your microphones remain off unless you're speaking?
May, Threemay, may I just propose a procedural motion to rearrange the order of the agenda? Notice that there are, the residents in the gallery might want to listen to item number 9.2 and also the item 11.1, if we can bring them up to the top so that the residents can listen and don't have to endure, you know, long waits.
So you're wanting to put 9.2?
9.2 ahead, and then 11.1, sorry, 11.2, because we have people in the gallery who are here for the Donath East Pavilion, Keon Park matter.
Hang on a moment. If you're okay, I'm thinking we will stick with the first one being the annual report. Then we'll go to 9.2, and then we'll put 11.2 in after that one.
Oh, excellent, yeah, okay, that's fair, that's fair, thank you.
Do I have a second there? Thank you very much, councillor Churey, and everyone in favour. Okay, no worries. Thank you, thank you. All right. So the first item is the Darabben City Council Annual Plan 2024 to 2025. So it's my pleasure as the mayor of the City of Darabben to present the 2024/25 annual report. It's been an exceptionally busy year for the organisation, and I'm very proud to be working with this group of councillors, most of us first-time councillors, and to deliver a council plan that champions the themes we know are most important for the community. So that includes some things we've been talking about tonight, things like planning for growth whilst ensuring both livability but also inclusion in our community, addressing mental health and mental health disadvantage and homelessness, strengthening partnerships and advocacy to make, to help us get better outcomes for the community, and improving basic services, including our customer service, and strengthening the delivery of course services to the community, and also responding to climate change through local action. So we've also delivered a range of infrastructure projects across sporting facilities. We've supported the expansion of kindergartens in partnership with We've supported the expansion of kindergartens in partnership with the state government. We've delivered renewed playgrounds and invested more than 1.6 million in resurfacing of roads and improving safety and accessibility across Darabin. So, together, we also on-boarded our new CEO, Anne, and welcomed the return of councillor Angela Vilala following the sad passing of councillor Gaetano Greco, who served this community so faithfully for over 17 years. So, it's been a very successful year. Proudly present the Darabin City Council Annual Report for 2025, sorry, 2024/2025 to you. It will be available on the Darabin website, and I strongly encourage residents to have a read to find out how we've served the community over this past year. So, councillors, do you have any questions of officers regarding the report before we go any further? No questions? So, we will begin the debate. I remind you that once we've entered debate, there's no further questions. Do we have someone who will move the motion? If we can get it up on the screen, please. Thank you. Oh, there is a minor amendment, which was the years were incorrect. So... Councillor Sangster, thank you. Do we have a second, councillor Arturri? Does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, just briefly, through you, Mayor. I'd just like to move that council endorses this annual report. This report is a celebration of a vibrant, respectful and connected Darabin. This year, we were honoured to host the ceremonial opening of treaty negotiations at Darabin Parklands. This was a historic moment in Victoria's journey with truth and treaty. We strengthened partnerships with Arundri elders. We achieved rainbow tick accreditation across key community sectors. We saw sports participation rise by 9%, with strong growth among women, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples, and culturally diverse communities. We've delivered safer streets, thriving spaces, over 10,000 square metres of new footpaths, new pavilions, expanded kindergarten places. Our creative events have engaged more than 160,000 people, and our climate leadership continues through 32,000 indigenous plantings and a full transition to electric pool vehicles. There are many challenges ahead for local governments and for all of us as a community. We know that there is much to do to co-create a stronger, more connected Darabin, where everyone feels a sense of belonging and purpose. The climate crisis will test our resilience. Rising heat, heavier rainfall that we had just yesterday, and increasing costs place real pressure on our most vulnerable and on our shared infrastructure. Our drains, our green spaces and our streets are feeling the impact. Darabin remains not just, we don't just have the coolest street, we also have one of the sweatiest cities, yay us! But together, we can change that through collaboration, creativity and care. We can build a cooler, greener and more compassionate Darabin, and one that protects both people and planet. So, I thank the officers for all their work and our mayor, and ask that we support this.
Thank you. Does the second wish to speak?
There's really nothing I can add to that, so I'll reserve my right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this motion? Councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to draw attention, I mean, it's a big report, there's a lot in it. So, thank you to the officers for the great work to pull it together, and I think it does tell a great picture of the diversity of effort that goes on across council and the many skills and lots of time and money that goes into making all these things possible. I just wanted to just refer to, I'm just trying to find the page number, page 23 of the actual report, where we start a section about quick facts about Darabin. And that does a number of things in terms of grounding us in who we are as a community. Talks about how many of us were born here, how many of us were born overseas. That's over 30% of people born overseas. So, the diversity that that brings is really important to us here, and obviously then demonstrates with it a diversity of languages, and there's a number of those listed. Really important work that we do to try reach these communities in meaningful ways. There's lots of other great information on there, but the one other point that I just wanted to make was, it does have a breakdown of households, and we have 60.8% who live with family, 29.4% that live alone, and 3% as other. And my reason for drawing attention to that is basically, it just shows we do have diverse needs in terms of what we need as housing that we live in now and housing into the future. And the demographic of people living alone is an increasing one. And so, we need housing that can actually support the development and the changes that we're seeing in our community. And I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we all done? Okay, we might go to a vote then. So, everyone in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Bogliss, are you opposed? Okay. So councillor Arturri, councillor, my goodness, Emily Dimitriadis? Councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster, councillor Selkos, councillor Vilala. Those opposed, please raise your hand. No, so, those abstaining, councillor Gonny Bogliss. Okay, thank you. We'll move along. So, we are now on to 9.2, which is the Thornbury Activity Centre. So, we'll just start by asking councillors, do you have any questions of the officers regarding this item? Perhaps, do we have a motion that we would like to bring up? Councillor O'Brien?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to bring forward the motion that is alternative to what's in the agenda. And this is one that a number of councillors have collaborated on to bring us to this point, and basically to reflect some of the feedback that we've had from community since this has gone out for consultation.
Thank you. So, do we have a second? Thank you councillor Arturri. Would the mover like to speak then to this motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, so maybe if we can move it up a little, because the first part is as was, and the changes are more substantial through the middle. Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm now, time has started. I want to acknowledge, yeah, the care and passion that we've clearly heard from the community in the last few days and here tonight. We know we're threading the needle very delicately on this, and we thank the officers for the work that they've done. We've had significant tight timeframes to work too, and that has impacted some of the work that we've all done in this space. But for us, having the submission really does matter. It means that Darabin has a voice which is considered professional and community-focused, and will inform how housing growth should happen in our city from our perspective to the state government. And we're fortunate to have planners who understand that housing supply must go hand-in-hand with affordability, livability, climate resilience and local character. We need to finalise the submission tomorrow, so I want to acknowledge the work done by everybody to try shape it to where we are now, and discussions were literally happening right up until we walked into the room tonight. So, there's a lot to be proud of in the document, but the two key things that the updated motion does collectively, there's a few points, but collectively what they do is raise the importance of ensuring the development balances and protects the character of High Street while better activating St George's Road, and some of the tweaks that go on in between, as we've talked about, the character that comes forward, that has come forward from the community. And then the second element is calling on the state government to genuinely engage and continue to engage with council and with our community so that we can have a better say going forward. So, some of the elements that I would like to draw attention to in the submission are the environmentally sustainable design standards, and seeing an inclusion of wanting those to be enforceable is really important for our homes too, so that we can cut energy use and costs into the future and stay safe as climate change does impact us more. It's also encouraging to see neighbourhood house, neighbourhood character recognised because protecting what people love about their area while envisaging something better is what good growth is about. And we know it's focusing on two key corridors, and what we're hoping to see with these amendments is a bit of a more balanced approach that would ease the pressure on High Street and help activate St George's Road and support local businesses and community amenity along both corridors. And of course, if we have more people, which we will with more housing, it means more movement, and without serious investment in public and active transport, we risk turning Darabin into a big car park which none of us want. So, let's get the transport right, let's get all of the infrastructure and the services correct, and then we will have a good way forward that represents our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the second like to speak?
Thanks, Mayor. I think councillor O'Brien covered most of the key elements of the submission and the amendments, and I want to thank her for late-night phone calls last night and the work that we did on it, and other councillors as well to arrive at this. But a couple of the things that I just want to point out myself, that officers have looked at, I guess, the broader catchment areas and have recommended or submitted some changes to the state government, including the part south of Croxton Station to the west of High Street, and classifying that as out-of-catchment, and of course, the part above Normby Avenue around Miller Street to be excluded from the Activity Centre due to heritage considerations and environmental constraints. We've also submitted that the state government supports dedicated walking and cycling corridors, wider footpaths and safer crossing along High Street and St George's Road as a result of the development in this Activity Centre, and of course, support investigation into level crossing removals for better east-west pedestrian and cyclist links to enhance connectivity. And we heard in an answer to one of the questions, upgrades to the 86 trams. One of the amendments that the motion, or one of the amendments to the submission that the motion has is of course, a cap of six stories along High Street, except in circumstances where higher levels would meet the criteria outlined in the submission, and of course, in very limited circumstances as outlined in clause 2D, up to 10 originally. Of course, the state government had 12 there, so that represents a reduction on those particular sites. There are many others in the submission. I think councillor O'Brien covered them quite well, so I might leave it there, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Councillor Vilala?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that we've done a really good job of trying to accommodate some of our concerns and the residents' concerns. However, I have an overarching concern with the whole process and the state government's attitude towards this, with the Activity Centres and the way that they've rushed a lot of their proposals, put a lot of pressure.
This relates to our submission so far.
Yeah, so I'm going to vote against it because we've got requests, 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 but there's nothing in there that says that the whole process has been unfair and the residents haven't been consulted to the extent that they would like. And so, I have concerns with the process, and as a consequence, I can't support even the submission. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Vilala. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favour of the submission? Councillor Sangster?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Tonight, I would like to speak in support of this updated motion. I want to begin by acknowledging that not all of what the community has asked for is covered in this version. Compromise is tricky, and I can assure you that as councillors, we've done our best, and as the councillor for South West Ward, I've really put the effort in. The state's proposal currently puts most of the development pressure along High Street, whilst St George's Road is treated as a lower-order corridor. And this new motion attempts to begin to address this by lowering heights on High Street. This new motion also recognises that we need a street-by-street understanding of what's truly reasonable and practical when it comes to development. A one-size-all-fits-approach risks eroding the very things that make Thornbury such a vibrant, human and ecologically livable place. As our population grows, we have to match that growth with stronger local services, and particularly a real commitment to increase school capacity. So, it's great that that request for information about planning for schools is now named. Obviously, I want to acknowledge the enormous effort from our officers behind this work. They've managed a difficult state process with professionalism and care. I'm glad that we had a strong ask for more affordable housing, but now I'm even more pleased that we are calling for a commitment from the state government to build actual public housing as part of the mix. As Tim Reid MP writes, "The property industry won't deliver affordable housing out of the goodness of their hearts. We need mandatory requirements for public housing, and this motion calls for this." And I would like to name here that while we no longer have much public land left in Thornbury, public housing could be built on land bought by the state or purchased directly from the developer. This activity plan will shape Thornbury for decades to come. We have to get it right, and this is a much closer version than what we had before. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? No, or we might go to the vote then. So, all those in favour of the submission that's on the screen, please raise your hand. So, that's councillor Arturri, councillor Bogliss, councillor Dimitriadis, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster, councillor Selkos and councillor Olaris, and those against, councillor Vilala. Okay, so that is carried. Thank you. And thank you to all of the committee members. So, we're going to go to 11.2 now? Give me a minute to find it. Ah, here we go. So, this one is the upgrade of J C Donath East Pavilion in Keown Park Football Club. Just checking that we've got the right, yep. Okay, so councillor Vilala, do you wish to move the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, do I have a second for the motion? Can I just check we have the right motion on the screen? I believe there were two versions. Just one? Okay, thank you.
I think so.
Okay. Do I have a second? Councillor Arturri, okay. Councillor Selkos?
Can I move an amended motion?
Can we?
Amendment, sorry.
If you can, can we bring the amendment up?
If agreeable.
So, yep, that's the bit that's different there, so the bit in red and with D removed, which, yep. So, councillor Vilala, are you happy to accept that amendment?
Yes, I'm happy to accept the amendment.
Thank you very much. Okay.
So, happy to accept the amendment.
Oh, sorry, second, yes. Excellent. Councillor Vilala, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor, through you. This notice of motion comes in two parts, and the first part is just a breakdown of the funding and timeline that we, that there is an agreement for the Keown Park Football Club at Donath Reserve. There's a timeline there, there's state funding. Then the council has also contributed some funding, but the concern is the timeline. The state government gave the funding in 2022, and just to cut to the chase, we won't, with our funding, the construction won't start until 2026, 2027. So, in the meantime, the club continues to grow. What, when I met with the club and examined the rooms and facilities, I was shocked as I stayed in the preamble, the old male toilet was used as a change room for the girls. Donath Reserve and its facilities does need urgent attention. So, it goes back to the timeline that we have to wait a long time. In the meantime, the delay in construction is the concern. It is a growing club with over 330 participants, and as we heard from the residents in the gallery, that is very successful. It's a dynamic, growing club, and the delay of inclusive change rooms has... has actually meant that the intention for the funding is being undermined because they're losing girl teams and potential female participants. So there's an urgency to get this matter, to get the matter addressed. So the second component is because of the delay, and obviously we know there's limited resources, the notice of motion asks to explore what other councils have done with the construction of modular pavilions. Hobson's Bay, Moonee Valley, Marunda City. So it's, so we're looking at, the notice of motion asks for a report to come back to council exploring this potential. That maybe there are savings to be had, it might be cost efficient, time efficient. The club has done some research. But I think it's really important to go out and have a look what other councils are doing. Because I think it could be beneficial, it could be more bang for our buck. And as the residents have told me, that what they've discovered is that you can get a better design that covers more ground and they would actually have change rooms, more change rooms all year round, which is basically at the heart of some of the problems that they have and the tension. So, and also there might be room for community space, which therefore there could be a multipurpose function for the pavilion. Anyway, I think it's well worth us exploring. So I ask for, the notice of motion asks for a report to come back to council. I think knowing what's out there will benefit not just Keown Park, but all the other pavilions that we maybe have to, have to address in terms of renovation and making them fit for purpose. So, yes, so thank you, Mayor. And I thank councillor Arturri for seconding the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the second elect to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is indeed an important project, as councillor Velala pointed out. In terms of the, I guess, research advice, call it what you will, that's been requested in clause five, I don't know the answer to any of those questions in terms of whether it's cheaper, more efficient, will provide, you know, better use, as councillor Velala outlined. So I really look forward to the report that will come back now in December and our meeting in mid-December. So as I said, it's an important project and look forward to the advice and hopefully that project progressing in its, in the best form that it possibly can.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? We might progress to a vote then. All in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. So that's carried unanimously. So, thank you. All right, we're going to go back. I think we're 9.3, is that correct? Okay, so 9.3 is also about the Thornbury Activity Centre, but it relates to a specific piece of land that is owned by council. So councillors, do you have any questions that relate to this item? Okay. Do we have a mover of the motion? If we could get it up on the screen, please. Coming. Okay, so do I have a mover of this motion? Councillor O'Brien? Do I have a second for the motion? Councillor Selkos? Does the mover wish to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. I will quickly, so I think, you know, what we have before us is something relatively straightforward amidst the complexity of lots of terms like win, fall, gains, tax, and I'm probably not even saying correctly right now because my brain is a bit tired. But I think, you know, we've, basically we have heard that there were some concern in the community and that's the reason, I think I just wanted to speak to that a little bit. So acknowledge particularly there was a question from Adam earlier around the kindergarten. Most of what I had thought I would cover, I think Rachel covered really well in the response at that point. So I don't feel I need to tread over that ground. But I guess what I would just say is that, you know, it doesn't commit us to rezoning, the rezoning doesn't commit us to any immediate change. It just gives us options to explore in the future. And I think that's what's important about this motion and important about this direction. And if we think 30 years into the future, we don't really know what, you know, exactly what's going to be ahead of us. But there could be fantastic opportunities at the site. It could be improving the existing kindergarten. We know the park is a bit tired there. It could be improving that and actually giving better open space to that area, particularly if these developments along High Street are going to happen, as we've just discussed in the recent item. We could have an opportunity for a solar car park. So even if it remained a car park, you could put a solar roof on it and generate power locally. We could do open space development of affordable housing above it. There's just lots of options ahead of us, but it ties us to nothing. It just gives us opportunity. And so that's why I think it's worth supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Selkos, did you want to speak to this item?
I'll reserve my right, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Is anyone else wish to speak to it? Okay, we're going to progress straight to a vote then. All those in favour, raise your hand. It's carried unanimously. Thank you. 9.4 is the road management plan, adoption of that plan. I believe we've got a motion. But, sorry, excuse me. Are there any questions that people have in relation to this one? Oh, okay, so, yes. Is there a councillor that'd like to put forward a motion? Councillor Velala? So that's up on the screen. Do we have a second for the motion? Oh. Yep. Thank you, councillor Sangster. Does the mover wish to speak? Yeah, three minutes.
It's on now. Thank you, Mayor. This is pretty straightforward. What we have here, the road management plan provides just a framework, as it's stipulated there, for safe, efficient and transparent management of our roads and pathways. So it is core business and therefore it is an important document. What we have here is that the document has been reviewed and the review focuses on inspection and repairs and therefore to align with M A V best practice. So if you go to page 292, if you go to two page, 292, sorry, you will see there the improvements that have happened over time with the waiting of repairs, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the outcome of the review and it is aligned with M A V recommendations. More specifically, the amendment is basically to strengthen or to make more apparent or contextualise the strategic planning principles that are on page 294 of the report, which is to emphasise an integrated approach to planning. So what my amendments propose is to explain in more depth how this plan integrates with council strategies. So it's basically strengthening what is already required on page 292, which is to have an integrated approach. And that's pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the second elect wish to speak?
Yes, just briefly. Thank you, Mayor. So yes, moving, the seconding that the council endorse this amended review of Darabin's road management plan. This is a vital document that guides how we inspect, maintain and repair our local road network, ensuring safety, accessibility and usability for all road users. Importantly, it helps us identify where risks and hazards exist, especially for our most vulnerable road users. We know that by making roads safer for cyclists and pedestrians, we make them safer for everyone. So this plan provides a transparent and accountable framework that strengthens our duty of care, reduces legal risk, builds community confidence through consistent standards and timely action. And as noted in the report, while this plan is mostly a prescriptive technical nature, it's just, it's what we do. A safe and well-maintained road network is an essential enabler of outcomes described in our key future plans, including the overall council plan and the climate emergency plan and our walking strategy. So I thank the officers for their work.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to take an opportunity to thank everybody that contributed to the draft, making the draft stronger. We saw a number of really good ideas come in through that and officers did a great job of integrating them. So thank them for the extra work in doing that. But thank you to the community for, yeah, really valuing the work and adding to it for us. Thank you.
That's all? Okay. I might just comment, you know, I think this was commented last time, this came as a draft. But if you haven't had a look at it, there are some really great improvements in the plan from previous, in particular in relation to timelines for both proactively looking after our footpath and roads, but also in responding. So, yeah, it's a, it's a great document, so thank you. We're going to go to a vote. So all those in favour of the motion up on the screen, please raise your hands. It's carried unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I propose a brief adjournment for a break?
You may. Well, I think I need a procedural motion.
Procedural?
I can call one. We'll do a procedural motion, let's just do it. All those, so I've got to move around, I've got a, I've got a second, councillor O'Brien. We've got a five-minute break. All those in favour, raise your hands. Okay. Please make sure your microphones are turned off. Okay, can we all have a seat, please? We're going to get started. Okay, councillors, we're up to 9.5, which is the local sports infrastructure fund grant applications. I think we're still missing one or two people. We might get started. Okay. Councillor, does anyone have any questions in relation to this grant? Well, grant process? No? Okay, if there are no questions, do I have a, yes, you can?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand that there is a amended motion that is being considered by a councillor. Just on that question, my, just want officers to correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that if the third one, so in C, is applied for, for the planning stream, given there is already $30,000 allocated to it, in the event that we are unsuccessful, the project would remain the same in the budget. Is that correct?
Through you, Mayor. Yes, councillor, that is correct.
Okay, then do we have councillor Demetriadis? Thank you if you'd like to move the motion. And do we have a second for that motion? Councillor Selkos? Councillor Demetriadis, would you like to speak? I think you would, standing.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item on the agenda is for council to apply for three state government grants, namely the Pitcher Park Sports Ground upgrades, the Preston City Oval Sports Field lighting upgrades and Edwards Lake Athletic Track lighting plan. So I'm going to speak about the Pitcher Park, which in June 2025 this year, council allocated $500,000 for drainage upgrades to the Pitcher Park Oval. Yet very recently, we were informed that the project would now cost between $760,000 and $950,000 for the works, which is why tonight council has been asked to apply for the state government's local sports and infrastructure fund to assist with the additional costs. Given the timing of this application, unfortunately, this project can no longer be delivered by the end of this financial year. And I thank Parkside Sports Club for being so understanding, given that they've been advocating for upgrades for over 10 years. Thank you. While I support this application to assist with funds to Pitcher Park Oval, I think it's important that council also has a plan if the it's important that council also has a plan if the grant is unsuccessful. So therefore, I'm also proposing that if this grant is not successful, council will prioritise the successful delivery of the Pitcher Park Sports Ground upgrade by establishing an alternative source of funding for the balance during the 25-26 financial year, or by including a further project allocation in the 26-27 budget. And in the meantime, council will continue to undertake all the necessary works to deliver this project, which will include designs and going out to tender before the end of this financial year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Would the second like to speak?
Thanks, Mayor. And I'll keep it brief. I'd just like to thank officers for bringing us these grants today to apply for. And I'm sure that the clubs involved in all our sports grounds would love us to apply for everything, but we know that's not possible. However, I just wanted to point out, see the Edwards Lake Athletics Track Lighting Plan, I think that this new amendment that was brought by councillor Demetriadis is very well received with most councillors, I believe. And it gives us an opportunity to have things ready in the pipeline for any future funding that we can receive. And it puts us in a good step in delivering more projects as a council. So thank you to everyone.
Councillor Boglas, did you have something to say?
Uh, yep, I'm speaking to abstain though. Can I speak to that now?
Uh, yes, I hadn't called for next speaker, but you may speak. Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, I rise tonight to express my concern regarding the proposed allocation of funding for sports infrastructure projects. Now, I want to be clear, I do support our clubs and our grounds, many of our local clubs particularly, women's and girls' teams needing better, safer and more inclusive facilities, including a few in my ward too. But my concern is not about that tonight, it's about balance and where our priorities are sitting as a council. These projects continue to take away from the resources that everybody in our city, our community also deserves, and that is wellbeing infrastructure. We talked often about embedding our council plan and the wellbeing of our community across everything we do, but when I look at our budget, I continue to ask what resources, apart from consultations, have we actually gone into the long investments of services for our people? And are we living by that wellbeing statement? Last year, the Darabbin Community Grants Programme received 176 applications requesting almost $1 million in supports, and only a few hundred thousands in small grants were successful. That means dozens of brilliant grassroots longstanding community services and initiatives, often run by our volunteers, continue to miss out.
Point of order, yeah?
Meanwhile, while we continue to-
Excuse me, can you wait for a moment, please? Can you both sit? Just explain the point of order. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mayor. On relevance, this motion is about whether or not we apply for state government grants, not allocate money in a budget. It's quite narrow, and I'd say that-
I think if you wish to keep speaking, if you can keep to the point of the submission.
Yes, please. I'm actually speaking to where our resources are going and if we continue to apply for funding with sporting-
The report is about whether we apply for these grants.
So not everyone plays sports or attends sport. In fact, many of our most vulnerable community members are single people in their 30s and 40s, living alone, isolated and struggling silently. It's not a small group, it's a majority of our residents. So when we continue to place supports in our community clubs, we're forgetting about the vibrant, healthy and connected Darabbin that we need to fund, not only physically, but the spaces, services and supports-
Point of order.
These grants are about sports. That's all you can apply for in this grant round. So if you can't speak to that, then you've only got eight seconds left anyway. Go ahead.
In closing, if I could, funding short-term projects for a year here and there is not enough. Community service needs sustained long-term investments, the same kind of commitment we show our bricks and turf when we apply for grants for our sporting clubs. We must do better, not just for the clubs on the field, but for the people standing along on the sidelines of our city.
Please be seated. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this motion?
Mayor Zulah, is it you who'd like to ask a question?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, anyone else would like to speak? Yes, councillor Arturi.
Oh, sorry. Um, thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, the projects that we are applying for grants this evening, as you mentioned in your council, that the grants are only in relation to sports. They are opportunities that we either take advantage of or we don't. I think we should absolutely take advantage of this in particular, noting that these projects are already in our 2025-26 budget. It would be quite strange not to take advantage of applying for grants. We're not budgeting extra money necessarily, as I asked in relation to the planning stream application, and officers happily provided that advice, that in the event we are not successful, we're not increasing the budget to 60,000 and using more resources not already budgeted, but rather would revert back to the 30,000 already allocated. So why not take advantage of that, match the funding and make sure that our projects are shovel-ready, so we do have that pipeline ready to go to leverage more opportunities in the future in relation to projects of this nature. So given that this item is squarely and very narrowly about whether or not we apply for these streams, the community sports facility stream, community sport lighting stream and the planning stream, we ought very much to support this very strongly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We might go to a vote now. I'm sorry, you've already spoken once, you cannot, you can't speak a second time. They're the rules. So I'm going to go to a vote now. All those in favour of this grant, please raise your hand. So that's councillor Arturi, councillor Demetriadis, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster, councillor Selkos, councillor Valella and councillor Alaris. All those against, please raise your hand. All those abstaining, please raise your hand. It's councillor Boglas. Thank you. Okay, the next one is the committee engagement policy 9.6. Do we have any questions, councillors, in relation to this one? No? Uh, do we have a mover of this motion? Councillor Sangster? Do we have a seconder? Councillor Arturi? Got to be quick. Okay. Does the mover wish to speak?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'm moving that the council endorse the updated community engagement policy and its rollout timeline. We've disappeared. Darabbin is a wonderfully diverse community. We all know this and love this. Many voices, cultures and lived experiences. This policy ensures that every voice has a place in shaping our city's future, especially those who have historically faced barriers to being heard. Community engagement is more than consultation, it's about building trust, strengthening relationships and creating decisions that reflect our shared values. When people are involved, they see themselves in the work of council and that makes local government stronger, fairer and more responsive. This policy commits us to equitable, inclusive and meaningful engagement guided by our Towards Equality framework. It reaffirms our responsibility to listen to and work with our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples, young people, seniors, diverse cultural communities, LGBTQIA+ residents, people with disabilities and those experiencing disadvantage. By endorsing this policy, we strengthen not only our decision-making, but our democracy itself. And I thank the officers for their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the second like to speak?
I reserve my right, thanks.
Okay. Does anyone want to speak against this policy? Any other speakers? Still reserving your right, councillor Arturi?
I think councillor Sangster covered it so eloquently and perfectly. I need not add anything. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I'll go to the vote then. So all those in support of this favour, in support of this policy, please raise your hands. That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Uh, 9.7 is the council, 2026 schedule of council and delegated committee meetings. Can we do, are there any questions in relation to this one? No. Uh, do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor O'Brien. Do we have a seconder? Councillor Valella? Um, okay, so would the mover like to speak?
Can I ask a question? Sorry. Can I just see the-
You can, because we haven't started. So go ahead, quickly.
I just want to see the red bit.
Okay. Ah, yes.
I, my only question would be, in what form would that assessment be envisaged to come back to councillors and staff? That's all. Whether a briefing report-
Um, through the chair, I'd anticipate that officers and councillors will have a reflection. If we've heard any input from the community, we'd bring that to that discussion at a briefing session and then we would probably bring that through the governance report in July, if there's any change to be had or made.
Okay. Would you like to speak to it, councillor O'Brien?
Thank you. And thank you for drawing out the more specific nature of that point seven, councillor Arturi. Um, yeah, so I guess in terms of the addition, it's basically, it's pretty straightforward. We're basically saying we're discussing a change here. We're true, I'm going to say traditionally, but I don't know how long it's actually gone on for, since my time. We have met on Monday nights and it's been that way for quite some time, as far as I understand. And what we've got before us here is a proposal to move our briefings and our meetings to Monday nights. This is more specifically about the ordinary council meetings and planning public meetings that we do. So what we have, I guess, what we faced are some challenges around the timing and how this all works when we have a number of dynamic motions and amendments flying between us all. We've got public question times coming in, we've got submissions, we've got petitions on some occasions. And the workload is quite immense that goes with that for officers keeping up with it all. And so the idea being that if we give them Monday, hopefully it means less everybody working crazy hours on the weekends and a bit of a steadier pace for everybody. So I wholeheartedly support the intent of why we're making this change. And my point at seven is basically just to make sure that we can have a point of reflection and make sure it's doing what we are hoping it will do. And so other than that, there's nothing more to say. I hopefully we can support this.
Thank you. And did the second wish to speak? That's it. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this one? Okay, we might move to the vote. Is that okay? Yep. All right. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That one's carried unanimously. Thank you all. We're up to 9.8 now, which is the governance report. So I'll just get that one up. Are there any questions from councillors in relation to this matter? Oh, not this matter, this report. Oh, okay. Now, we have got a motion that requires some words. Is there anyone who's prepared to move this motion? Councillor Selkos and seconded by councillor Demetriadis.
So in 13, Mayor, and 14, it's councillor Arturi.
Yes, thank you. So we can fill that in. This is for a big three-day geek. But thank you very much. So next line down is councillor Arturi as well. Yep. Okay, does the mover wish to speak to this?
I'll keep it brief, Mayor. As you all know, the governance report does come every month to council. And although it's very detailed, and I'd like to thank the officers for all their hard work in putting it together, this month we do have the mayor and deputy both on leave and I'm proposing that councillor Arturi be, act as the temporary chairperson. That's all from me.
Thank you. Does the second wish to speak?
Um, nothing further.
Does anyone else want to speak to this? Councillor Sangster?
Um, yes, thank you. Speaking in favour of the officer's recommendation that we note the governance report and of course thank them for their work. But I'd also just like to highlight and be very clear for those in the community who may have concerns about some of the policy. The policy, the question that's been raised, this still protects the community's voice when it comes to lodging complaints or raising concerns about any breach of conduct. Every one of those concerns will continue to be recorded, managed and reviewed with transparency and accountability. So what is being done in this particular section that I'm highlighting is to simply remove a legally invalid clause, nothing that limits the community's right to speak up. In fact, this change strengthens our processes because it ensures issues can be resolved fairly and openly within council before being escalated further, in line with our internal dispute resolution policy. So this is actually about building trust. It's about showing our community that we take their concerns seriously and that we are accountable and that we are committed to transparent and responsible governance. So just wanting to be really clear that people are still able to lodge complaints and raise concerns.
Thank you, councillor Sangster. Sorry, Serena, I'm going to have to ask you to be quiet. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? Councillor Arturi?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to build on what councillor Sangster said. And that, I think the point was made is that, well, don't abolish the policy amended. I think that that might be what has been done in substance, in the sense that it has been embedded into an existing policy that council adopted, I think, in June, in terms of a one, a document, one policy that sets out how we deal with complaints, including those from the community. The substantive change, and I know that, you know, some might not agree with this, but the substantive change is essentially that instead of the mayor getting a complaint from a community member and going, okay, well, there's a prima facie case after arbitration, which I think in most cases is probably not the best way to resolve the majority of disputes. The mayor gets this, and of course in consultation with the conduct officer and so forth, gets the complaint and decides, well, what is the best way to deal with it? Is it a, an alleged breach of the council code of conduct, in which case it goes through internal dispute resolution processes outlined in the complaints policy? Or is it an allegation of corruption, in which case it would go to IBAC? Is it, you know, a councillor has been stealing from somewhere, in which case it should be referred to the police? Arbitration is of course then what happens subsequently after it goes through those internal mechanisms if it's a code of conduct breach. But ultimately, as councillor Sangster put it, community complaints are still valid, are still dealt with. The way in which they are dealt with is, I think, more appropriate and of course slightly different from what it was. And I think what we've found with a variety of policies, it's no use having several that potentially contradict each other, in particular that are inconsistent with the Act, and that's what this does. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Uh, we're going to take this one to the vote then. All those in favour of carrying the governance report with this series of recommendations and policy decisions in there, raise your hand. It is councillor Arturi, councillor Demetriadis, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster, councillor Selkos, councillor Valella, councillor Alaris. All those opposed. And those abstaining, councillor Boglas. Thank you. We will move on to the next item, which is the accessioning, public art in Darabbin. It's a very hard word to say. Okay, councillors, do we have any questions of officers in relation to this particular item? No? Okay. Do I have a motion that anyone is prepared to put forward? Councillor Demetriadis? Do I have a seconder to this motion? Councillor Sangster? Councillor Demetriadis, would you like to speak?
Thank you to councillor Sangster for seconding my slight amendment to the officer's recommendation. Firstly, we're endorsing the deaccessioning. Sorry, I was practising before. So we're at those guidelines for public art. And however, in this instance, we're looking at the Fairfield pavement mosaics that have been in place for many years. I think it's been about 30 years, I do recall, when they were first put in. And what we're suggesting in this amendment is that we go out to consultation with the community about whether the mosaic should stay on Station Street and also speak to the Fairfield traders about their thoughts on what we should do. And then receive a report back to council on the outcome of that consultation and then go from there and make a decision. So I hope all councillors can support this motion. Thanks.
Councillor Sangster, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'm pleased to support the officer's recommendation, which has been amended to endorse the de-action listening. No, I can't do it. Guidelines for public art in Darabin, dammit! Public art plays a vital role in shaping our city's identity, sparking conversations, celebrating creativity in our shared spaces. But just like any other part of our urban landscape, artworks have a life cycle. Many of Darabin's public pieces are now aging, deteriorating, and in some cases posing safety or maintenance challenges. These guidelines give us a responsible, transparent framework to manage that process, protecting our community, our artists and our reputation. Importantly, decommissioning old works also potentially creates new opportunities. By not spending limited funds on repairing art that has deteriorated beyond repair, we can instead allocate any money we might find towards championing emerging artists to contribute new works and gives us the chance to commission these works in suburbs that have been underrepresented in having access to public art. I also, though, do want to acknowledge the Fairfield pavement mosaics, which have been named in this report, and thank the artist for his significant contribution to Darabin's cultural story over the past 30 years. As a former Fairfield resident for nearly 10 years, I have been a big fan of the shining jewel-like embedded in the paths. By endorsing these guidelines, we're respecting the past while making space for the next generation of creativity in Darabin. And I thank the officers.
Would anyone else like to speak to the deaccessioning, public art in Darabin?
Very briefly, I won't add anything substantive to what's already been said by councillor Dimitriadis and councillor Sangster, but just to acknowledge the great work that the team does in the creative space in Darabin. Obviously, having Bundera Home seated in my ward, and I've been out there a couple of times with Leah in particular, and they do great work. So thanks to all the work that they've done on this report. Thanks.
Councillor O'Brien.
Thank you. Deaccessioning guidelines for public art in Darabin. I think just what it does for me is it raises, you know, the point that we have so much. We have so much incredible art around this municipality. And so I just encourage people to explore it and enjoy it and spark inspiration for the future ones that we will bring forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We might go to a vote now. So all those in favour of approving this, passing this motion, please, raise your hand. Thank you. That's passed unanimously. Okay, thank you. We are up to eleven point one, which is the notice of motion from councillor Vilella in relation to the proposed trial of e-scooters and e-bikes. Councillor, you're leaving councillor Bogus? Oh, yeah, you have the conflict.
Conflict of interest.
Fantastic. You need to just declare it again. So thank you.
Declaring a general conflict of interest.
General conflict, thank you. Okay. We will continue on. So thank you councillor Vilella. Would you like to move the motion there? You happy to move it? Yep. So do we have a second? Yep, councillor Dimitriadis.
Thank you councillor Dimitriadis for seconding the notice of motion. This, my notice of motion, in my opinion, is pretty straightforward. It speaks to just good governance. The notice of motion, the way it's presented, and I'm sure you've all read it, would ensure transparency about the implementation and workings of the pilot programme to the public. That is informing the public, the residents, whose money and safety we are entrusted with. So firstly, the e-scooter pilot programme was voted by the previous council. However, the implementation and management of this project rests with this council. There has been no community consultation regarding how it is to be implemented to ensure that councillors have had a brief, yes, to be sure. Councilors have had three briefings on it and it was suggested of the last briefing that a report come to council meeting in July, but it didn't come. And so basically what this notice of motion addresses is following on or making sure that that recommendation or suggestion by the officers happens. The reason why it's so important is because, well, A, it's all about good governance and being transparent and the community has the right to know, but this is a high risk issue. And it's really important that what we're asking for is for the information to be made available to the public, that we've done the due diligence, that the risk assessment has been done, that there's a methodology used to evaluate the trial, where it's going to take place, where the various spots are going to be. And all that information really should be going to council, should come to the chamber so that the public has an opportunity to know and ask questions of the due diligence that council needs to do. Especially in light, as I said, that this is a high risk issue. There've been 37 fatalities since 2000, according to, I think it's to Royal Melbourne Hospital. There's been scores of injuries and councils are vulnerable to financial and reputational risk. So, and that's been demonstrated by the VCAT decision against the city of Yarra, where the decision, which Yarra lost, and it was a win for disability rights because VCAT determined that the footpaths really need to be accessible to all. And that was being compromised by e-scooters. So there are so many issues and I think the community needs to know that these issues have been addressed.
Ten seconds left.
Yeah, thank you. And give the community an opportunity to ask questions and to provide feedback. I just think it's good governance. Thank you.
Councillor Selkos.
May I have an amendment that I want to propose?
Okay, go ahead. So it's just item three there?
That's the one.
Does the mover and seconder happy to accept this amendment?
Sorry, mayor, I can't, no.
Seconder?
Uh, no.
Okay, so we will need to debate this amendment first.
I'm happy to second the amendment.
Got a seconder? Councillor Aturi. Okay, so go ahead to councillor Selkos.
Thanks, mayor, and thank you to councillor Aturi for seconding my amendment. I totally agree with councillor Vilella that we need to ensure we're transparent with the public and I assure everyone agrees that that is essential. However, I don't agree, I don't believe that asking for another report is the most effective way to share updates with our community. My amendment here simply proposes that information be added to the council's website, making it easier for everyone to find and understand. To date, councillors, we've already heard during various public question times that scooters can only be parked in approved areas, users are charged per minute while riding. If a scooter isn't parked correctly, the user continues to be charged. Scooters can't be used on the footpaths or in parks. And if someone tries to use the scooter on a footpath, it will lose power and stop. To that, I want to say that placing the e-scooter trial on hold to prepare a new report will also shift our offices away from other important work, which we know that there's many in our community waiting for the round two community consultation of Group C, your street, your say. And by putting this on hold and waiting for a report, it is expected that concept plans will move from November to February 2026. So councillors, I ask you to support the e-scooter trial as an opportunity to gather real data to see whether public e-scooters have a real future in Darabin. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second wish to speak to this?
I'll reserve for now.
Okay, is there anyone else who would want to speak to this amendment? Yes, councillor O'Brien.
Thank you, mayor. I speak in support of the amendment. And I guess, yeah, largely for the reasons that councillor Selkos has just outlined. We have gone through a number of iterations in terms of the information brought to us about the extensive levels of risk that we're looking to design out of this programme. And we've learned a lot of lessons from other areas in doing that. And I think what we've got ahead of us is a trial that could actually be leading for Melbourne and Victoria. So I really do want us to get on with it. I understand the idea and the need to inform the community and bring them on the journey with us, as is kind of the main intent of councillor Vilella's motion before us. But I just want to refer back to the item, I can't remember the item number, but the community engagement policy that we endorsed a few moments ago. And in that, it outlines the different levels and types of consultation. And there is a level in there that is in form, and that is, I think, what number three will do for us. It covers what we say we will do in that form of consultation. So we are doing it, it's just a different way. And yeah, I think the timing means we just need to move forward now and get the data and get this happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak against the amendment? Councillor Dimitriadis.
So for those who aren't aware, this commercial e-scooter trial that Darabin has committed to used $50,000 of ratepayer money to set up a scheme that supports for-profit providers as opposed to not-for-profit. This project has never gone out to community consultation in its own right. In fact, it was placed in the 2024 budget by seven of the nine councillors last term. I didn't support this, given the community had not been directly asked whether they wanted e-scooters in Darabin. At the time, instead, I pushed for $50,000 to go towards the Divers Complex Support Programme, which assists many community members, many of whom are homeless or survivors of family violence. But unfortunately, the funding for Divers was lost and the e-scooter trial was up. Fast forward to today, Darabin is still going ahead with the commercial e-scooter trial. Despite the city of Melbourne having terminated the programme, Marybeck Council having removed e-scooters from their proposal, and just two weeks ago, a report authorised by the CEO of Yarra and approved by Yarra Council confirmed that they will also not introduce an e-scooter trial. Now, what concerns me most about this proposal being put forward by Darabin is that following last year's resolution, Marybeck Council established a shared mobility stakeholder panel to advise on e-scooters while also consulting with their community on issues such as parking bays and slow or no-go areas.
Councillor Dimitriadis, we're talking just about the amendment at the moment, so if you could try and.
So Darabin has not done this. Furthermore, Yarra Council sought advice about their commercial e-scooter proposal from their disability advisory committee, and as far as I'm aware, Darabin has not done this either. Instead, what is being proposed here tonight is an immediate rollout of the e-scooter trial with many community members not even aware that it's coming and not even given the opportunity to ask questions or express concerns through submissions.
Can I have to ask you to wind up?
Sorry. Oh, so I will be voting against this amendment because anything less than passing the motion that calls for a report is an endorsement of proceeding with this commercial e-scooter trial in Darabin without meaningful community consultation or transparency.
Thank you councillor Dimitriadis. You want to speak to the amendment? Yes, okay.
Thank you. I thought I'd enter this amendment debate. I love an amendment debate. So I think just to address the key concerns that have been raised specifically in relation to this. As councillor Selkos and councillor O'Brien said, I think this is actually more in the spirit of transparency than a council report. If I got a one-pager with FAQs for every council report that I got, I tell you what, that would be a hell of a lot accessible than the reports with the level of detail that we get, which is often necessary at a council meeting. So in terms of transparency, accessibility, answering those key questions for the community that councillor Vilella rightly has asked, I think this is a better approach. It doesn't preclude them from asking any questions. As we've seen this evening, residents can ask questions about pretty much anything in our city. It doesn't necessarily have to be about a specific council report. So that is the reason why I will be supporting the amendment. As I said, I think the questions are legitimate questions that ought to be answered. And I think this, the amendment provides the best form to do so. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're going to move to the vote on the amendment. So all those in favour, please raise your hand. So that's councillor Aturi, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster, councillor Selkos, councillor Ollaris. All those against, raise your hands. Councillor Dimitriadis and councillor Vilella. So this now becomes a substantive motion. So now we now deal with the whole motion. I think councillor Vilella, you've already spoken. I think councillor Dimitriadis, you largely spoke to the whole item. So is there anyone else who would like to speak to this full item now? Councillor Aturi.
Very briefly, I just want to be a bit of a nerd and speak about the VCAT case because I think it's a very interesting one. The question that was put to VCAT was whether or not a duty was owed by the council to all residents in terms of access to footpaths. And of course, I believe the decision, I'm not sure whether a final ruling had been made, but at least a preliminary decision was made that the answer to that question was yes. And if that is the reason, or that is one of the concerns raised, then it is indeed a legitimate concern that, as we've seen, I think, from a few of the questions to public questions earlier this evening, that that concern has indeed been noted and addressed. And obviously, I'm sure we'll get more detail in response to the motion if it is carried this evening. So I think it was an interesting legal question, but that, I think, question has been resolved and addressed by the ruling. And as I said, the trial will prioritise safety and accessibility. Councillor Selkos outlined some of those points in terms of where those e-scooters are proposed to be parked and where they are allowed to go and where they are not allowed to go. And again, all this detail, as councillor Vilella has rightly requested, ought to be answered in the form in the motion that is before us this evening. The last point I want to make is that the trial in its current form is a six-month trial. That means it'll end in about May next year, give or take, depending, of course, when it starts. But at the moment, I think it's May. If the evidence we receive doesn't support an extension to that trial, then we don't proceed. It's as simple as that. And I think we all would look forward to that advice, but of course, we need to go through the trial first. But I'll be supporting the motion in its current form. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Going to go to the vote then. All in favour of the motion as it stands on the screen, raise your hands. So that's councillor Aturi, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster, councillor Selkos, councillor Ollaris. All those against. We've got councillor Dimitriadis and councillor Vilella. Thank you, everyone. I feel like we might have only one item left. Let me have a look. We've done eleven point two. Oh, yes, please bring councillor Bogus back in. Thank you. We don't have any, we've got no urgent business this evening. We do, however, have one item that is considered confidential and it relates to the outcomes of the Darabin Community Awards, which are coming up very soon and which committee members are welcome to come along to. And we'd love to see you there. And we'd love to see you there. But for this item, we do need to close the meeting to the public so that we can not spoil your surprises at hearing who has won the awards. So in accordance with section 66.2 of the Local Government Act 2020, council may resolve to close the meeting to members of the public to consider the item designated confidential in accordance with section 3, brackets 1 of the Act. We might then ask the public members to make their way. Thank you very much for coming along this evening. Yep, I'm just waiting. So councillor, is there a mover of the recommendation to close the meeting to the public and move into confidential meeting? councillor Arturi, is there a seconder to this motion? councillor O'Brien. I'm putting it to the vote. All those in favour, raise your hand. That's unanimously carried. Okay, so thank you to all of the community members who have joined us this evening. To those who have joined in via the live stream, please note the live stream will not resume after the confidential meeting has concluded, given this is the final item of the evening. So I now declare the meeting closed to members of the public at 8.31pm and request officers to cease the live streaming and recording. Thank you.